Jay McCluskey.
Salute, pledge, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if I might have a word of privilege before I pray to say thank you to all of you who are elected officials and service in our community for what you do to help us live in the quality place that we do. It is appreciated. We know much of your work is behind the scenes and things that don't always get the spotlight in the headlines. But we do know that is servant work and in the kingdom of God at least, the servants are the greatest. So, thank you very much. Let's bow together in prayer. And when the father of these who are, as I said, our servants to our community, I ask a special anointing upon them and upon their families and upon their loved ones and the sacrifices that they make in order to serve in the capacity to which you have led and enabled them. Grant to them strength, wisdom, and grace, and grant to each one of us a sense of peace in knowing that we are in the good care of a sovereign God who is overseeing all matters and allowing us the privilege of working with you and at times you working with us through us, even around us, sometimes in spite of us. And yet, Lord, for your kingdom's sake, for the health and welfare and the goodness of your people and for the blessings, Lord, we give you our praise and our deepest gratitude. In your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. Appreciate that. Madam, would you call the roll?
Here.
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 Thank you, madam. Can I entertain a motion for approval? Minutes have one from Commissioner Epperson, second one from Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? Call the roll, please, madam.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, madam. Now, report from our county mayor, Mayor Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. I'm sure everyone else will probably have something to say, but I'd like to mention the Jamie Harris family. We were all saddened to hear the loss of Officer Harris. It seems like it was only last week that he was sitting here, serving his community and serving this commission. He did a great job. He was a great guy. So, our thoughts and prayers go out to his family, his friends and family. And I understand the visitation of funeral will be Thursday at, I believe it's North Cleveland Baptist, is that right? From three to six, Thursday evening. He'll be missed. He did a great job serving Bradley County. We appreciate him. Thank you. And of course, everyone already knows about the accident yesterday, but was a fairly bad accident. Could have been a lot worse, but five oh four was on its way to an accident on Harrison Pike and lost control, hydroplaned or whatever, in a little bit of rain that we had that morning and ended up taking out a pole or two down the road and totaling the ambulance. The important thing was the two employees were banged up pretty bad. They were taken to the hospital, but they since went home. And other than being banged up, there's, last report I got, they were in good, good condition. Insurance will be looking at the ambulance tomorrow. We're pretty sure that it's a totaled vehicle, of course. There was a backup, so everything's been taken care of. And, you know, OTW, I'd had three ambulances budgeted this year, but we've only gotten one of them so far. And the other two, hopefully, will be here soon, but last word we got, they should be delivered sometime in May. So, at least we were trying to be as prepared as we can for the future with ambulance vehicles, but we can't help that they can't, haven't been delivered yet. That's pretty much the case throughout everything right now. It takes forever to get it. But one of the three has been received and in service, and the other two are still on order. But we did have a backup and everything is going on just the same, except two more employees short right now. That's all I have on someone unless someone has a question or something for me.
Anybody have a question for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor Davis.
Thank you.
Can I entertain a motion for the consent agenda? One for Commissioner Thompson, second by Commissioner Winters. Any discussion? Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I'd like to add a document to be included in the consent agenda. School Budget Amendment, Item Five of the Consent Agenda. This is a resolution which you have here for you. The Bradley County Schools approving the amendment. If you'll put that in the consent agenda, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All right, Madam, call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, madam. I report to our committees and/or districts. We will start to my right, Commissioner Epperson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Everything is doing good in the first district and looking forward to the likes and tomorrow. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hughes?
Ms. Chairman, it was saddened to hear about Officer Harris, Jamie. I've known him for several years and besides being a good officer, he was just an excellent man, good person. But otherwise, I have nothing else to pass on.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Commissioner Offerd?
Yes, just two things. Second district's doing well. I understand from Facebook, some of you people inform me that the McDonald's ice cream machine is broke, so I plan on trying to get that fixed if I get elected this time around. The Audit Committee recently met with the Comptroller's Audit Team. As chairman of the committee, I've asked, I am tasked with providing each of you with a written report of how the committee discharged their duties. Each of you have a letter which includes those details. I ask to include a copy of the letter in the minutes and submit a copy to the Comptroller's Office as well. Ms. Laurie, do you have that letter?
Okay. All right. Anything else, sir? Uh, that's it. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. Ms. Chairman, you will recall Cecil Crisp addressed the commission a few months ago and explained the state took a strip of his property thirty-two years ago, but continued to be billed taxes on the land. Ms. Chairman, the Finance Committee voted to authorize surveying the property to be paid from the commission line 599. Basically, we gotta pay the bill. Ms. Chairman, I put this in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Okay, a motion. I have a second by Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion on this?
Yes.
So, did the state take it or did the county take it?
I don't know the answer, but Mr. Hughes sounds like he did.
Mr. Hughes?
It was a mixture of both. The county had taken it several years back, and then the city or the state came in when they're widening Highway sixty and went further back on it. So, that's the only way I know to explain it.
Are we paying the state's bill or the county's bill?
It'd be the county bill.
But if the state took it, then why are we paying the state's part of the bill?
We only paid the survey.
Okay.
How much? It was about $600, the survey cost.
Is there any more steps after surveys?
I think all we were asked to do in that meeting was survey it and then guys would, we would take that information and make a decision. But all we did was survey it. We authorized it. So, now it's just time to pay the bill.
Yes, Commissioner.
So, this goes back to the road department for them to decide what to do with it? Going to the planning commission?
Most likely it'll go right back to finance.
I'm just trying to pay a bill.
Okay. Any other questions?
What do you? When we did the survey, I don't, I mean, we just agreed, I think, set aside a certain amount, got the invoice, trying to pay it out of 599. What we were gonna do with this, I don't know. What were we?
Stanley needed the numbers to figure out how much property he'd been paying taxes through the county. So, that's, Stanley's already got it.
This is probably to be continued.
Yes, definitely to be continued.
Yeah, okay. Uh, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please, madam.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee voted Friday to recommend approving a resolution authorizing the Bradley County Road Department for paving work for the Bradley County School of Property owned by Bradley County Schools, commonly known as Hopewell School in Bradley County, Tennessee. You have a hard copy of the resolution. This will allow work to begin on the plan, stack cars on school property rather than on the road. Mr. Chairman, I place this in form of a motion. Thank you.
Okay, a motion. I have a second by Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion on this? We've been talking about this for several years.
This just allows Sanders to do work.
Right. No discussion. Call the roll, please, madam.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance also voted on Friday to recommend approving a resolution which you have before you amending the Bradley County Business Travel Expense Policy for Employees and Elected Officials set forth in Section 512 of the Bradley County Employee Handbook. This resolution increases the mileage reimbursement rate to that already approved by the state at .585. Ms. Chairman, I place this resolution in form of a motion. Thank you.
A motion. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Winters. Any discussion on this? Commissioner Slater.
Is this just the mileage or is this the other piece of it also?
Where is the resolution?
It both?
No, apologies. Are you talking about the sales tax?
I am.
Yes, it's in Section B. Further resolved as travel policy designated in Section 512 of Bradley County Employee Handbook. Subsection related to lodging shall be amended and replaced as follows. Lodging tax of hotel motels that are reimbursable, sales tax is not reimbursable.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, Commissioner.
Why sales tax not reimbursable? Is that per state law or do we just decide not to reimburse the sales tax of it?
Mayor may need your help on this one, but basically when you stay at a hotel, you get these, all these different types of taxes. And when I talked to Renee, basically, if we pay the tax, we don't get it back from the state. You have to take a letter with you to the hotel stating that it's tax deductible or that you're not to be taxed on that. So, basically, it's to keep counties from having to pay the tax and not getting reimbursed on it. Those taxes that are not reimbursable, you will get reimbursed on. I think city and county taxes, they don't get reimbursed on those, but the state tax. I was, she explained it. Go ahead.
Commissioner. Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
One tax gets reimbursed and one tax doesn't.
So, if you had a check or credit card from the county? Yes. Exactly. I understand. Does that make sense to everyone? I mean, if it doesn't, that's law, so. Any other questions? Do we have a first and second on that? I believe we do. Okay. Call the roll, please, madam.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
I would also like to say no because there are, there are reasons that somebody might get stuck with this and is starting to think about it now.
Thank you, madam.
All right, last but not least, Ms. Chairman, you guys have this all in front of you. It was formed this morning that Representative Hall and Senator Bell, you know, they adjourned last week, but one of the things that they introduced, and from what I understand, this is already passed the General Assembly, waiting on the governor's signature. But basically, this is the litter control specifically targeting illegal tires. I'll just read it real quick. It's introduced, expands the offensive aggregated criminal littering to include knowingly placing, dropping, or throwing one or more tires on public or private property without permission. Classified aggregated criminal littering as a Class A misdemeanor if it involves less than four tires and a Class E felony for four more tires. This amends TCA Title Thirty-nine, Chapter Fourteen, Part Five, Title Fifty-five, Title Sixty-eight, Chapter Eleven. We've been talking about the tires, illegal tires. We may have an update here on what we did this past weekend. But one of the things that we've been trying to accomplish probably the last year is put a little more teeth into the offense of someone who decides to go do all this at like Exit Twenty and the cemetery and all that. Up until, well, this goes into effect, says later on, I want to read the whole thing, effective July one. Up until then, it's a misdemeanor, just like you were throwing away a fast food cup or something like that. Now, if you do it for more tires, it's gonna be a felony.
Class C.
Class C. I now know that there's different kinds of felonies. I know that from the warning, but this is a class. So, I just want to bring everybody's attention to that. Appreciate Representative Hall's and Senator Bell's work on that. And maybe we can put a dent on this illegal tiring. It is frustrating, I'll say it, to go out there and clean up tires and then a month or two later to see those tires back right where you cleaned up the site. Then hopefully, law enforcement has what they need, the district attorney's office has what they need to prosecute this. That's all I have. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Blake.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
May I mention Mr. Blake before he finishes and also the mayor? In finance, the other day, we, we voted on roofing and is that something where you would need to vote on tonight? Mayor or Chairman or Commissioner Blake or?
Mayor, Commissioner, Ron, I think you have additional amendments on that that comes to support finance, right?
Was that in the packet they got tonight or is that next meeting? It's next meeting, I believe.
Okay.
It'll, yeah, it'll be something he'll pull out at that time because of the amount, but I'm pretty sure it's next meeting.
I wanted to make sure before you got off your business that, that we.
Thank you, Mr. Rep. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rep. Commissioner Pete?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I have a few things. First of all, going back to the travel expense amendment to the employee handbook, when I've been harping about things not going to work session and, and then we, it just goes to like the Finance Committee or this committee, and then we bring it straight to voting session. I know that's how we've typically done things, but like this is the first time I've seen this thing. So, y'all may have talked about it in depth last, but when I watched on the overview, the, the new system that we have here, I didn't hear much about it. So, I had no idea about it, but there's a lot of things I see as an issue about not reimbursing someone that might have to go on a trip that they don't have time to go through the hoops that the county has to get reimbursed on. And I've heard of different areas where that would, you know, come into play, like maybe somebody EMS has to run to Knoxville. I don't know. There's different things I can see that would be an issue, and they don't get reimbursed this because they didn't jump through the hoops. So, anyway, if we had taken this to a work session or longer to go over, then I might have understood a little bit more. So, I'd like to see where we don't rush things through a committee. And if you don't go to finance and you don't know anything that's going on, a lot of us don't have time to go to finance to watch all these things. So, that was my second thing that I'm gonna try to get at, is we have this nice little new system that probably cost us an arm and a leg. I don't know the amount of it. And I would like to see all of our committees start coming in here where it's more professional, and you've got this up here. And the public can see what's going on, as well as all of us that can't get to every committee meeting that we have. We can just review it at the Bradley County website and we can see what's going on. So, I don't know if I need to bring that to work session next week and then we'll put it on a voting session. That's what I think we need to do. We can have more discussion about it and then we can have all fourteen opinions. If you'll put that on the agenda, we'll talk about having all of our committee meetings in here. And that's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pete. Commissioner Cry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everything's in good shape in a second.
Thank you, sir. No ice cream machines or anything?
Oh, I'll leave that up.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Thompson?
I'll let you know tomorrow night about nine o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Commissioner Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This past Saturday was another tire cleanup at Exit Twenty. There were several groups that came and participated, Walker Valley Football Team, some of their football players, Bradley Highs Junior ROTC. They were able to dispose of 1,387 tires. That brings the total of tires that have been abated to 7,485. And I know everyone is just dying for the opportunity to come and participate. You've got one more opportunity, May the fourteenth, eight thirty a.m., Exit Twenty. And Cleveland Highs Junior ROTC has committed to come and help for, for that Saturday. So, if you're looking for a good, good muddy time, come on out.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Appreciate that. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Chairman Moll. I'd like to say six things that's doing well. Good luck to everybody tomorrow in the election. I, I think everybody's one just putting your name on a ballot because if, if you've never tried it, you might want to try it sometimes. It's, it's tough and what we put up with sometimes. And I enjoy it, but it, it's a tough job. Talking about Jamie Harris, Jamie, I had in-service with Jamie just a few weeks ago and I knew he'd been having some tough times. And Jamie was a good family man. Wore the blue line well, protecting the third well, and, and he protected us for several months, if not years, up here. So, we owe him a lot of great gratitude and Jamie will be very well missed. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Commissioner Davis?
All is well on the sixth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Raper?
Thank you, Chairman Moll. First of all, I just want to give our condolences from the seventh district. Jamie was a resident of and very saddened to see that. And two or three other things, I'm gonna say the same thing I said at last meeting. Please vote tomorrow. It's important and who our leaders are, it's very important. And the last thing is this, Saturday I attended at Lee University a, something that celebrated our veterans. I sat with Commissioner Winters and it was a great time and got to see a Black Hawk helicopter and that thing looked as large as the field and I, I would hate to be in war against us and one of those inaction. I would say that you better get ready to see Jesus. So, that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raper. Commissioner Winters?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Jamie Harris sat in this chair about two weeks ago and he, as you remember, protected us for the most of his career, the last year, year and a half. And he's a loss and we give our condolences to the family. Those individuals that were in the wreck with the first responders, they are husbands, their wives and their daughters, they're put their lives on the line and hope for recovery very swiftly. Just to show, it's just a regular run that they normally do. And we live on what is Sixty Highway and we see the ambulances going back and forth continually with law enforcement. And they put on the badge, they put on their garment that they wear. They protect us. They pick us up when we're sick, when we're ill. I hope those that were injured recover swiftly. I just want to say this, it's an honor to working, to work with every one of you on this commission. And as one that's unopposed, I, it was difficult for me, knowing the challenge that each of you had to deal with, that have made tough decisions, and now it's on posters or now it's another. I want you to know how much I appreciate working with each one of you, regardless of whether we've agreed on everything or not. It's an honor to work with this group, these thirteen others with me. Say that.
Thank you, Commissioner Winters. Yes, Commissioner Blake?
If you don't mind.
Sure.
Commissioner Raper, I apologize. I wasn't able to make it to the Military Appreciation Day Duty Call out there at the tire pickup.
Yes, sir.
But I can tell you, it may be fun watching those Black Hawks, but riding in them, not so much. I hated every minute. Now, they're a bumpy ride, but when they put the soldiers in there and they'll airlift you out, the one that gets the short straw gets in the back. It's like a real bumpy ride. And you kind of lose your cookies every once in a while. But I'm glad that they had that there. I talked to Coach Brew earlier in the week and he had a good turnout, I understand. And he had some hump V's and Houston hats and stuff like that. So, I appreciate what Coach Brew at Lee University does to honor the veterans every single year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake.
Commissioner Moll, may I make a response to that?
Your question.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake and Cry and Thompson for your service. So, I appreciate that.
We've talked a whole lot about Officer Harris, his passing and him being, you know, with us virtually every meeting. I think it would be appropriate at this time to honor him with a moment of silence. Thank you. I have little things we need to go over. You have a school board vacancies, fourth and fifth district. There is a timeline there. If you'll look over the timeline. April fourteenth is when fourth district board member Troy Weathers and fifth district board member Rodney Dillard resigned from the Board of Education. Tonight, I announced that the commission will receive resumes and accept names submitted through the selection date, May sixteenth, to fill the Board of Education, fourth and fifth district seats. On May the fifth, the chairman causes to be placed public notices, May fifth, in the Cleveland Daily Banner, notifying the public of the vacancies and specifying offices to be filled and the date of meeting to fill said offices. And then on May sixteenth, the county commission will appoint the Board of Education, fourth district and fifth district board members. Per Tennessee Code Annotated, it's responsibility of the county commission to appoint to fill vacancies on the Bradley County Board of Education. Recently, fourth district board member Troy Weathers and fifth district board member Rodney Dillard resigned from the board. The county commission is also tasked with providing public notice seven days in advance of the appointment. You have before you the timeline to fulfill our duties. We'll appoint on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, at the noon voting session, an individual to fulfill the fourth district vacancy and an individual to fulfill the fifth district vacancy. Is there any discussion on the timeline? Yes, Commissioner Thompson?
I got one question. Those running for office in those districts, can they turn in a resume also?
I would think they would. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's why we're going ahead and doing it. We're fulfilling our law, but I know we have an election coming up tomorrow. Any other questions? Ms. Slater and Commissioner Goins. Y'all find us good people. Thank you. All right. Can I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda? I got a motion by Commissioner Thompson. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Peak. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, madam. Moving into the agenda items, item A, Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as we had in our work session, uh, last week, the Director of Juvenile Services presented the interlocal agreement and shared that this has been going now for several years. It's uh, you know, on your screen, if you'd like to look at the actual resolution. Uh, it's required that we do five different resolutions. It's the same revol- resolution, but it is, I'll read the first one in its entirety. And I'll, each time we vote, I'll mention the name of the next, uh, next county. Uh, this resolution authorizes Bradley County's Juvenile Detention Center to provide juvenile detention services in Marion County, authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Marion County for the provisions of said services. Whereas Bradley County and Marion County are both local governmental entities of the state of Tennessee and as such, authorized to enter into an interlocal agreement pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated twelve dash nine dash one oh four. Whereas Bradley County currently maintains and operates a juvenile detention facility known as the Bradley County Juvenile Detention Center, herein, hereinafter, facility, uh, located at sixteen twenty Johnson Boulevard, Cleveland, Tennessee, three seven three one one. And whereas Bradley County and Marion County each have the statutory power and authority to maintain and operate a juvenile detention facility and to confine juvenile offenders therein pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Title Thirty-seven. And whereas Marion County, from time to time desires to confine in the Bradley County Juvenile Detention Center juveniles pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Title Thirty-seven. And Bradley County is willing to furnish its facilities and personnel in exchange for payment from Marion County of fees and costs, all as more fully described in the interlocal agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Bradley County Legislative Body, meeting in regular session, claims in, at Cleveland, Tennessee, on the seventh date, should it is really the second day of March twenty twenty, that the Bradley County Juvenile Detention Department is hereby authorized to provide juvenile detention services in Marion County for a period of three years in exchange for payment from Marion County of one hundred and twenty dollars per day for each juvenile detained in the Bradley County Detention Center. Be it further resolved that the Bradley County Mayor is authorized to execute an interlocal agreement with Marion County for the provision of the juvenile detention services. Mr. Chairman, I present this.
Okay, motion. Have a second by Commissioner Slater. Any discussion? Call the roll, please, madam.
Yes.
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 Chairman, I present this same resolution for McMinn County, Bradley.
Second by Commissioner Slater. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Passes, item C, Commissioner Winters.
Chairman, I present the resolution that has already been read, uh, in behalf of Polk County and Bradley.
Okay. Got a motion, got a second by Commissioner Slater. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Motion passes, item D, Commissioner Winters.
Mr. Chairman, I present, uh, Sequoia County and Bradley County for the reading of its past resolution.
Got a second by Commissioner Slater. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Passes, and E, Commissioner Winters.
Finally, Mr. Chairman, uh, Sumner County will join Bradley County in this resolution that I've read.
Okay, got a motion, second by Commissioner Slater. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, madam. Moving on, item F, Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we have been talking about the uh, infrastructure money from the federal money. And we're at that point where um, we're gonna start making some uh, traction, if you will. Um, I believe it's necessary for us to just earmark, I repeat, just earmark uh, a minimum of three hundred thousand for septic issues, septic repairs, so forth and so on. Again, all we're doing here with this resolution is saying three hundred thousand is gonna be set aside here so that um, um, later when the, the procedures are put together, the who, how it's done, all that kind of stuff. It'll happen probably in the fall, September one timeframe and all of that. Uh, we'll have the money ready, been earmarked um, here tonight. So, Mr. Chairman, uh, I put the form of motion resolution appropriating up to three hundred thousand for properties in need of repair, replacement of failed and inadequate on-site water and wastewater systems allowed by conditions and terms of the American Rescue Plan Act from funds allocated in resolution on uh, two, uh, twenty twenty-one dash fifty, that's on page sixty in your PDF there. I put that in form of motion. Thank you.
Motion, have a second by Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? Mr. Peak.
Um, I like to make a substitute motion that we wait until we get more information back from the state. We could do more or we could do less depending on the new TDEC grants that are available. I don't see why we're rushing in it to earmark it. We haven't touched anything out of the bucket. When we start diving into the bucket, we can always allocate it then. And it could be more that we need at that time if we don't get the TDEC uh, grants that we're gonna go after. I forget what's available, but I think there's seven hundred and fifty just for sewer. And then there's even more out there available for this specifically. And I hate, I, I, I just don't understand. I don't hate anything. I just don't understand why we want to just earmark it. We haven't touched, we haven't touched the bucket yet. Um, and if we go to start touching it, then we could just say, hey, don't forget, we're gonna do this. It's not gonna go anywhere. I just don't see why we're rushing into allocating it right now. It just doesn't make any sense. We just don't have all the information in front of us yet. And I mean, I'm all for doing this. This is one of my projects that I am dedicated to doing. But I just want to get more information, see what we can get from TDEC and then see if we're doubling, tripling or not having to take any out of that bucket if we get more from the TDEC grant. Uh, that's just uh, my thoughts on it. So I put that in a form of a motion, substitute motion to wait until we get more information from TDEC.
Okay, have a substitute motion to wait until we get more information from TDEC. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Commissioner Davis.
So this money is coming from the sewer and water bucket, correct? And so have we drawn that money down to fill that bucket? Or is that in the next phase whenever we're going to draw the money to put that into the sewer and water bucket? So currently, when we drew down the money, the twenty-one million, did we put anything into that bucket yet? I guess is the question.
We didn't.
Commissioner Blake.
We did not draw all twenty-one million. We got half of it. Um, and we're scheduled to get the other half this August, if I understand the timeline correctly, Mayor. Um, so as far as having the money in the bank, we don't have all twenty-one million. Again, this is just earmarking it. Um, I anticipate that in September, we can spend the next three months putting together policies and procedures. I do not think we're being hasty with this at all. We've talked about this. Um, the state is perhaps gonna do something, but whether they do or not, we know what we've done. Take care of what we have in front of us. Um, and this is, if this is something this commission wants to do, I think it's the right thing to do to earmark the money. But to answer your question, do we have the money in the account right now? We don't have everything in there. I think there's some left over, but um, I fully acknowledge that this is something as far, that will happen in September and we have every bit of it. Uh, I think it's only coming from one bucket, uh, as far as that goes. Water and sewer are two different buckets. Broadband is on bucket, water is on bucket, uh, sewer is on bucket. And that last bucket, um, or the American Rescue, the last bucket, where we've been taking money from.
The COVID response.
COVID response, yeah. That answer your question?
Yeah, so the, we, we have to wait to, till August to draw this money down. And so I guess just explain, explain your theory as to why you want to go ahead and earmark it when the money's not gonna be ready until August.
Well, we know we're gonna get it.
Yes.
So um, you can, like a budget, you go ahead, when we pass a budget, we go ahead and we anticipate that we're gonna spend X amount on this. We're gonna spend X amount on that, we're gonna spend X. So it's basically go ahead and making some decisions now so that you don't have to make those decisions of how much. I just said three hundred thousand, if somebody wants to do more. And if the state uh, comes in with more, so be it. I'm sure that there's plenty of uh, fail systems to do that. Uh, I just think when you have a certain amount of money on the table and you got lots of people looking at it, what I would hope to do is take three hundred thousand off so that it's, it's not touchable, that it doesn't get spent somewhere else. I've done this, you know, eight years now. I, I kind of know how it works. If you don't do this now, some, something will happen some way, somewhere, and three hundred thousand will get used somewhere else. So I'm trying to protect three hundred thousand. If we get more from the state, great. But remember, the state also said last year that they were gonna give us another million dollars. Did they do it? After further review, no, they didn't. But who knows what the state's gonna do? And I just know what we have control over and that's what the fourteen of us want to do.
Commissioner Epperson, then Commissioner Peak, and then Commissioner Winters. Commissioner Epperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think that this um, resolution, uh, I think we should go ahead and, and move on this and set this three hundred thousand aside just for the fact that we move on and we look at what we should be trying to achieve, which is the seven and a half million dollars uh, that we're gonna be talking about at the next work session. And then if the state, and then you're talking about federal money that's supposed to come this fall. Three and a half millions for water, three million is in another bucket for sewer. So I'm assuming that you're saying that let's set three hundred thousand dollars aside of the three million for repairs. And then like I reported earlier in the meetings, uh, prior to this meeting, was that TDEC is already set three hundred million dollars aside. They're in discussion right now with how they are gonna come up with a program that will deal with what you're wanting to set three hundred thousand dollars aside. So then that will be great if they come up with that program. We have a three, and we put the three hundred that you're wanting to put in this resolution and set aside and say, for instance, that the state will award Bradley County, um, let's say, two million uh, uh, in this program that they are in discussions with, that, as far as the state. And that'd be great. And we put this program together and hopefully, once we talk to the technical side of trying to achieve, I just, just thinking, to try to just put this behind us. Uh, we don't like, we don't have the money. It, it, it's just, we're gonna put some money aside and hopefully that's, when we do get the money, that's where this money will go. Uh, but what we need to be doing is go ahead and try to make this decision and, and just do it. And then let's concentrate on the seven and, and a half million dollars. Because putting the seven and a half million dollars with the six and a half million dollars gives us fourteen million dollars. So let's, 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 let's do it. And uh, it's, it's just, and we can change our mind this fall, whether the money comes or not from the feds. Hopefully it does. But let's, let's, let's move on and, and let's concentrate on trying to get seven and a half million more dollars for infrastructure that Bradley County should have had been done twenty something years ago.
Thank you, Commissioner Epperson. Commissioner Peak.
Well, I hate that it makes it sound like I'm not interested in doing this at all. But I've been doing this for ten years and I know how commissioners work. If we only set three hundred aside, that's all we'll get. You sit up here and say, oh yeah, but if y'all want to raise it, we'll raise it later if we don't get the money from the state. BS. That's just not so. If this is all we allocate, that's all we'll get. So that's why I didn't want to allocate a specific amount. I wanted to wait until we got more information so I could fight for more if we needed to fight for more because they're gonna be doing a fight anyway to raise it from three hundred. But I will rescind my substitute motion so that it doesn't look like I'm against this. And then be prepared, I will fight for more if we don't get anything from TDEC. Cause I don't think three hundred will do it. If we don't get any more grants from TDEC or from the fed money or from wherever, then three hundred will not be enough. So I just didn't want to fight for more later because it's always what it is, having to fight for more later because this is all we allocated now. But I will rescind my motion as long as Mr. Howard Thompson is okay. We're rescinding his second. Otherwise, we can vote on it.
Mr. Thompson, are you okay with that?
Oh, I want to ask the mayor something.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Thompson.
Respond to this, Mayor, could you please?
Well, there's not a question there from me. I, I don't have a problem with you going ahead and earmarking it. It, like someone said, it's not going anywhere, but if you want to earmark it, a goal, a changeable goal because the state has indicated they're gonna have a lot of money available for this also. Uh, but I don't, you know, it's fine, whichever way you want to do it. If you want to go ahead and earmark it, that's fine. It is money we don't have yet, but you can earmark it and then it'll, when we get it, it'll be addressed.
Okay, all right. So that motion has been rescinded back to the original motion. Any other? I got a couple people want to speak. Commissioner Winters.
Oh, yeah. Thought you forgot me. Um, you know, this, this is a personal matter. Uh, with, there's a point in time, we've had people coming and standing at that microphone that have talked about feces in their backyard for how many months? And I think this is basically a statement from us that we're gonna attend to this. And I agree, this is not gonna take care of all of it, but it is a statement from this, this group saying we're, we're, we're in it to win it. And three hundred may not give, someone said, a drop in the bucket. But at the same time, for that little lady that kept here, came up here several times, it lives off of Northley Highway, it'll at least let her know, they, they listen to me and they're doing so. I, that, I think that's, optics are very important in a lot of things. Uh, that's why we have signs all over the place. Optics that we're out there. This is something that's showing that, that we're, we want to do this. So I, the original motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with, uh, Mark Dillard, which is with TDEC. He's the one that does inspections of se- sewer systems, septic systems, what have you. Uh, also inspects new and old or ones that are failing. Uh, he, I'd brought up the amount that had been mentioned. I, he said it was way too low. There's no way. He said Bradley County has more complaints than any other county that he, of the surrounding area. I also brought up a couple of numbers to him. One million was one and the other was about seven hundred. Uh, and he said the seven hundred is pushing it, but that's a good start. So with that, let me make a motion to change that to seven hundred and fifty thousand, uh, if I can get or amend that.
You're gonna make a substitute motion?
Substitute motion.
Okay, you've got a substitute motion to make it how much?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Raper. Now discussion, Commissioner Davis.
I still feel like we're rushing this. We don't know how many people are even gonna want to apply for this money. And so we don't know if three hundred thousand is enough. We don't know if seven hundred and fifty thousand is enough. We don't have a process as to how we're going to divvy out the money. Uh, the, 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 everybody up here is always about the process of doing something. And if you're rushing it, then you, you're not doing the people justice because we should, we should at least put out of notice and see how many people are even interested before we even allocate money. That's all I'm saying. And if the money isn't being drawn down by, until August, are we gonna spend all summer developing the process, developing how we're gonna grant out the money? Are we gonna be able to tell these people in August when we draw down the money, we're ready to start giving them, you know, help with their septic systems? I'm all about doing this, but I think we need to do it the right way first.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Peak, and then Commissioner Hughes.
His question is for Commissioner Epperson. The engineer that we're going to vote on here soon, on the thirty-five thousand dollar paid in engineer guy to help us get the, would you say, seven and a half million dollars that's available, they are also going to help us in the process if we They are also going to help us in the process if we vote on that, on the process of the field line um allocation for the repairs, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And they'll be here next week in the work session and everybody can ask all the questions. And then, that's a good question also too. Has anyone, Lori submitted any questions? Because the last time when I pulled this resolution to try to get the seven and a half million, a lot of people had questions and, and I asked for the questions to be submitted to you to, and we'd get those to the engineers and try to get. Okay. Yeah, and, you know, because I've been trying, this resolution, the, the time it goes to a vote, I've, it's been about a month since uh questions could be, and, or questions could be, you know, or answers could be, you know, given to your questions. So, hopefully that happens. Um, but uh, yes, um, that will be part of the, you know, if, if this commission moves forward and, and wants to try to go after the seven and a half million dollars, you have to have technical assistance. You have to put a plan in place. Uh, that plan then would come back to this commission. This commission would approve that plan prior to it being uh submitted to TDEC. And if you don't like the plan that the technical people that would come up with, it would be the criterias of how this should, how it should work. Um, they'll, it'd be in detail. Uh, and um, basically, it would be water, um, septic tank repair and sewer lines that could be extended in, which none of us know because we're not the engineers and then we don't, we don't have the technical background to be able to do and implement anything that was in that master plan. But the master plan, uh, would cost seventy-five thousand dollars. Fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars can be re- reimbursed of that uh plan that we already paid for. Uh, and also, the thirty-five thousand dollars can be reimbursed also uh for the technical services of trying to achieve the seven and a, but we'll go through all that next week at the work session. And they'll all be here, and Crystal has agreed to be here. She helped draft the resolution and um she'll be able to explain things with the uh resolution and uh the engineers be able to explain anything and answer any questions. Moving forward to try to achieve seven and a half billion dollars.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Peak and then Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you, Commissioner Epperson, for that long explanation of if the engineers would help us with that. But yeah, thank you for all that. Um, but I just want everybody to know, I'm not against this whatsoever. I will fight for money, number one, for sewer, um, failed systems, for repairing those. I will always fight for that. So, um, I, I just, I, I'm like Commissioner Davis. I don't see what the rush is on this. I think we ought to take our steps, take our time, and that way we can put it aside at a later date or, or put the money aside, it's not going anywhere. I don't think the fourteen of us are going to do anything with that money until it's addressed. And that this issue is addressed. I don't think it's gonna disappear. I'll fight to make sure it doesn't disappear. Um, I just don't want to jump ahead for what purpose. I don't understand why we're doing it right now. I just, I, I'm like her, I want to see the process, I want to see how we're gonna do it. And then let's appropriately fund the line that we need to make it happen at that time. That's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, after, uh, I really wasn't gonna bring this up because it's not really what we were voting on, but I'd spoke with uh Mr. Dillard, of course, and he did give me a lot of information. I was hoping to have an email from him today with uh showing the amount of complaints that he has had in Bradley County alone. Uh, the other thing that we spoke about quite a bit was the grant process. Apparently, the state uh several years ago had a grant process they went through. He is in the process of trying to get that uh criteria to us so that we can mimic that. It may be, it's one of the reasons I don't have a problem with moving so quick is because it doesn't sound like it's gonna be that difficult after speaking with him, so.
Mr. Hughes, you think he can have that information to us by next week?
I'm hoping so.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Raper.
May I make one point of clarification, please? Um, uh, I, I don't want the narrative to be tomorrow that Bradley County Commission's entering the sewer business. Uh, I want to read something from the resolution right here. It says this, it's for need of repair or replacement of failed or inadequate onsite water or wastewater system. So, uh, it's, uh, these are the failed systems, okay? This, this is not, uh, we're going out here and, and uh start on the side of the road building sewers. So I wanted to make that point of clarification uh for the public so that uh, that there's an understanding.
I think Ms. Hughes has that. Any other questions? Yeah. Yeah. Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, again, I do not think we're rushing into it. We're just budgeting really, um, like we do every year on uh the twenty-two, twenty-three budget coming up. Uh, the process, I've said it a couple of times already, the process can take the next three months or so. You don't have to have the process of, of how you're going to go about finding out who has a septic tank that needs repair and all the questions that you would ask somebody, how you vet them, all that kind of stuff. If it, I, I appreciate Commissioner Hughes' substitute motion. I started at three hundred thousand dollars really because I didn't want to come across as super duper greedy. I would have started with seven fifty as well because I would probably, will need that and more. I've also said in a number of meetings that hopefully the ACI Committee um can uh earmark a certain amount ongoing uh every year until we put a good dent in it or totally resolve all this septic uh issue. Um, but trust me on this, I mean, or if you don't tag somebody tonight or here soon, it will be gone. And without, without respect to Commissioner, you can fight, but when you don't have anything, when the money's gone, you won't have anything to fight for. If the state comes through with lots of money, fine, that's more than, that, that's seven hundred and fifty plus what the state gives, right? That's, instead of just what the state gives. Um, that's what I gotta say, thank you.
Commissioner Carrion, then Commissioner Peak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I uh was a real estate appraiser from nineteen eighty-five until December of twenty-twenty. And one of the requirements of an appraisal of a residential residence is that the appraiser walk around, physically walk around the home, including in particular the backyard where the septic system located. And what I was looking for is heavy green spots or liquid affluent coming up to the surface. I can assure you that three hundred wouldn't cover it, seven hundred, seven fifty wouldn't cover it. Would be in the ballpark at a million like that expert that Commissioner Hughes mentioned stated. These homes are numerous, people have more children, they have field lines requirement. And the sewage just comes to the surface. Uh, I'm for seven fifty, but Lord help us, we're gonna have to put more in it down the road. But I just wanted to make those remarks. It's all through the, the county, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion, Commissioner Peak.
Well, there's no dispute that everybody has issues, we know that. But we still can't help them until after we get the money in August. But uh, Commissioner Blake keeps saying that the money won't be there if we don't, if we don't set it aside right now. Well, there's fourteen of us and we all fourteen have to vote on every dime of every bucket that goes out of here. So, if we're gonna spend the money, fourteen of us have to vote on that. So, where's it gonna go? Is it just gonna disappear in finance only and then we don't know about it? Because the money's still gonna be there. All fourteen of us have to continue to vote on this. I don't want to make this a fight, I'm just saying, why are we rushing this? If we got till August, let's wait till August and then let's allocate it. It's not going anywhere. And if all fourteen of you get up here and we need a million or something like that and then you don't want to give it and you want to put it to somewhere else, then I'll remind you of this conversation, I'll say, well, that's where Mr. Blake said you're gonna, your money's gonna go, it's gonna run away. But all fourteen of us is what I'm saying, have to vote on every dime of every bucket. So how's it gonna disappear? It's still gonna be there in August when it comes time after we get all the information in front of us. And I'll fight for a million then if we need it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Peak. Commissioner Davis.
I agree with um, uh, Commissioner Blake that we want to go ahead and show the people that um we're willing to allocate some money. Um, but I disagree because I don't think that we have any clue how much money we're going to need. Um, Crystal, can we um go ahead and pass a resolution and just say that a percentage of that bucket has to go to fix uh lines that are not uh currently working? And not put a dollar amount in there tonight? So that kind of solves both issues, saying, you know, we want to make sure that this portion of the money goes to the old lines, but we don't know how much money needs to go.
Three million in the sewer.
So, we, can, can we say a certain percentage has to go? Or just say we have to allocate something towards the older sewer lines? So, so we kind of get, get moving on that process? It solves the problem that we're not gonna allow anybody to be forgotten and that we are going to definitely allocate money, but we don't know how much money.
Commissioner, Ms. Maltrey, were you looking at numbers, somebody was looking at them?
That's in the bucket. But that doesn't determine the percentage. Now we gotta determine what the percentage is.
Well, you don't have to determine anything right now. You just say, we are going to allocate a certain amount of money to be determined to the people that have sewer lines that are not functioning currently. That way they are not left out.
I see.
We are for sure going to include them in this money, but we have no idea what number we need to put in there tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
We, we got a motion on the floor.
We do.
Let's vote.
Okay. Are you calling for the question?
Yes.
Calling for the question. Madam, we, the, this is a substitute for Mr. Hughes made, right? Commissioner Hughes and Commissioner Raper seconded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We, okay, we have to, we have to come, call for the question. Madam, would you call the roll for that?
Uh, this, one second. You want to speak on? Okay, alright, yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now we have the motion by Commissioner Hughes, seven hundred and fifty thousand, second by Commissioner Raper. Call the roll, please, madam.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Poo, thank you. Adam G., Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, this is the resolution dedicate a certain portion of Elrod Park to the erection of a recreational facility for citizens of all abilities known as Miracle Field and Playground. And authorize the mayor to execute all necessary grant documents to secure the requirement, or required funding for construction of said recreational facility. I put that in form of motion.
Have motion, I have a second. Commissioner Slater, in discussion. Call the roll, please, madam.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, madam. Communication from the audience, anybody like to speak for the commission?
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, we could remember to do that and, and I apologize for that. I used to announce that and I've slacked on that myself, so I appreciate that for that reminder, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I see Ms. Kimsey back there, she started to get up, I believe she is wanting to say something.
Come on up, Ms. Kimsey. You are welcome. Absolutely. No other communication from the audience? Okay, announcements, uh, next meeting, work session, Monday, May ninth at noon here at the courthouse. Upcoming events, Election Day tomorrow from eight to eight, please get out and vote. Downtown dine around, May fifth, five o'clock downtown Cleveland. Ukrainian fundraiser and dinner, May seventh, at six o'clock at the Cleveland Church of Evangelical Faith. Have motion adjourned?